Join me in flag.
But not his, because they come with a camera.
My flag is to the flag of the United States of America and to the government for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Sue, would you do a hold call, please?
Alderman Plankhorn.
Here.
Alderman Smith, absent, Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Bennett.
Here.
Alderman Agnew.
Here.
Alderman Raines.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Steiner.
Here.
And now we have a call on.
Thank you. Move to approval of tonight's agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. No presentations awards, no personal appearances, we will move to the city administrator's report.
We have an updated receipt, item one, Parkers Parkway, the cracks are sealed, they're working on the striping, it's not done yet, the day they went out to do stuff was also the day that the MODOT started work on the light at the intersection, so we had a little conflict there, but we'll get them back to finish that up. Item three, met with the county commission this past Monday, they said they didn't think it was in the best use, or it was the best use for their public parking lot, to install the EV charging station, so, and looking again at the pole that's there, which has three large transformers and powers a couple of the restaurants and the buildings that are there, it would be expensive, and we would probably have to pay for whatever redesign they would need to do, probably with a pad mount transformer and that kind of stuff, so, it was not the, it was not going to work at that location, so, the question is, do we move forward on purchasing the units, since we have the $15,000 allocated, and then look at putting it at the Main Street Park in the back, like we had talked about, to at least get it downtown, or you're looking at putting it out here in the parking lot?
Do you want discussion on that now, or do you?
I don't have it, I don't have it on the agenda to any other point, it's only on here. I would say, you know, if you, if you want to put it off till the next work session, we can do that.
I don't think we've got a better choice, so I think maybe we need to move forward with the Main Street Park.
I agree.
Maybe not install it, but at least purchase it, and then...
Now, because it's already allocated, money's allocated for it, it's just purchasing.
What's the lead time on those, do you know?
Uh, no, I don't.
Okay.
We only have the money allocated to buy the unit, we don't have the money allocated to put it in.
To put it in.
Correct, so, and that is by far the bigger cost.
I don't know if it, because of where we, if we locate it at the bathroom, we already have electric there, so we're not having to install a new transformer and panels and meter boxes, so we can just run off the building, so that should save a lot of costs, it'll just be running it underground to the pad mount.
Is that something we can install ourselves, or is that a contractor?
Uh, we'll probably have a contractor do it, because that may be more complicated than just, just installing something, electric to a shed, say, but again, I don't anticipate that to be a lot, that would be in the next budget year, we would bring that forward before approving it, it's just, do we buy it, set it aside, and get ready to put it in?
Yeah, I think I brought this up the last time, I'd really like to know what installation cost is, and two, you know, if technology doesn't make this thing obsolete, you know, in a short period of time, then there's nothing wrong with buying it, but, I mean, we need it eventually, it's coming.
Right, right, okay, I'll get you some answers on, I mean, I don't know if the salesman from Cape can give me, you know, exact numbers on what they think would, when, if it would become obsolete in what amount of time, then it would just be...
There's a lot of cars out on the road using them, so I can't imagine it being obsolete anytime soon.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm not a technology person.
But, but even if it would, the technology would progress, I still think it's important we get something to service to us that would visit, that have those vehicles, I mean, we understand that technology may be only good for however long, but even still, an overnight charger would make a lot of sense, in my opinion, we've gotten some feedback to that extent as well.
Cost of the quick charge, for sure.
Well, that being...
Wouldn't be nice.
But really, that's not what we're even, we're searching for, you know, the overnight charger should meet what we're, you know, the needs of the clientele, I believe.
What we're hoping to accomplish.
Yeah.
Is there anything that's proprietary with them, or, I'm not familiar, are any of the vehicles, do they require a proprietary charger, like, will they service all EVs, or?
Tesla's proprietary, but the others, I think, believe they're adapters, or they're more universal, if it's not a Tesla.
So is that something you should have with you, then, if you have something different, you have an adapter that...
I would think so.
Because what you'll end up doing is downloading the app for, and what we're looking at is a ChargePoint station, there are multiple types, and you would download that app, it would tell you probably what worked for your vehicle or not, I mean, it's gotten to that point with these apps, the apps, it'll tell you where it is, and what kind of charger it is, so you would have those with you if you're going to be driving for any length of time, I would imagine, but I'm speaking from inexperience.
And I would also, too, maybe check for citizens to see, do we have the power there, you know, maybe that can give us some idea of what it takes.
So with this, we know it is a, it's fed off a 200 amp panel, this is not the high, the high-end, the high-speed ones, they have to come off of, no, it's usually a three-phase for those, so we don't have to do that, it would just be off that 200 amp panel, that's why we've looked at that, because it's affordable.
200 amps is pretty good.
I don't think it takes a full 200, I just mean, that's the size that your, size panel that you can pull it off of, yeah. Okay, let's see, a reminder that item four, moving day is August 15th, City Hall will be accessible, but we will not have any access to any of our computer equipment, because it'll be in process of being moved, so we won't be able to take water bills, you can do stuff online, you can drop stuff in the drop box, but we will not have the capability of taking water bills that day, we should be out and running by the morning of the 16th, so we're going to delay when bills are due, since that's the normal due date, it's like, just put it off till Friday, in the business on Friday, that would be the due date for August. Work session coming up Thursday, August 17th, we'll start that at 6:00 PM, you have the budget, a rough budget in front of you, these are just some preliminary numbers that we've looked at from our meetings with staff, from our tenure plan, and we will probably, I'm going to adjust it this weekend, have another draft for you at the next meeting, and then we'll get into some more serious stuff, because I've got some things I can take off up here now, that we've come across and talked about.
And that meeting will be at a new location?
And that meeting will be there, yep, yep.
Probably show up here.
I'll be with you.
We're putting signs out, remember those barricades I had out before?
Kept them.
Okay, yep.
Happy, for that meeting and stuff, can we have a pretty good update as far as how our revenue is running year-to-date, then, just so...
So your revenue line shows what you have for the un-audited balances, so that's what we're looking at, that we have in our, in our budget at that point.
Right.
So we're focusing out a couple of those, but we're going to be pretty close.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so that number will be in there. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Happy. Move to staff reports, first up is Chief Crump.
Not a whole lot of other ordinary to report, we are currently at full staff for the first time in a little while, and then, on grants, we had applied for a MODOT equipment grant, and we were granted that, and we already have the equipment, which was two additional portable breath test machines, and then we also received unofficial word that we were fully funded for our FEMA grant, which were the additional digital radios for the patrol cars, so once we get official word on that, get to order, and that will give us all digital radios for the patrol cars, and then we'll only be short two handheld radios, and so once we purchase them, we'll be fully digital and ready for the switch over when that time comes. That's the, that's the biggest thing that we had to report, and the new vehicles, they did arrive, and they're sitting in the garage, but we're at the mercy of the upfitting company, and we're scheduled right now to the end of September for those to get up to them.
The attached vehicles that we get?
The Dodge Durango.
Dodge Durango.
Uh-huh.
I still see a lot of the Challengers, I was in Perrigo recently, and they had a, I think, well, everyone I seen was a Dodge Challenger, I mean, is there a difference in cost?
No, the Dodge Charger and the Durango are pretty comparable in charge, yeah, some of the, some of the departments are looking more at the performance side, are going with the Chargers, but for the most part, you get more out of the Durango just because of the room.
I know I see a lot of highway patrols still in the Chargers, but I guess there's not many other choices of cars.
Right now Dodge is about your only choice.
Right.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Jason.
And next we'll have Steve Wilson, the lines.
Good evening, everyone. Most of you probably have heard or seen the water line project this year started on Ninth Street, one, one issue with one of the lines in there, we had to get a new valve installed prior to work beginning today, we got that done, so then, we'll take off running with it again next week, so, spoke with some, a representative with a company that sells crack filling machines, I have a meeting with them next week, those things are back in production, so we might be able to move on a crack filling machine here before too long, so, next week, we are actually, tomorrow, we will start painting curbs and downtown crosswalks, following that, we'll go to the other crosswalks in town, Roger Street, let's see, up by school, Washington Street, A Street, up in that area as well, so, did get word back from Bruce Terry with BT Electric, two more of the components have been delivered to his shop for the electrical building at the water plant, they are still waiting on the main component, so, but that's where we're at, and I also have a continuing delivery date for the back truck of January of '24, so...
Dump trucks.
You got any?
I think we haven't found any.
So, any questions, have you got anything in the report?
Yes, Sue, I want to, one, I do want to compliment your staff up in my neighborhood, the situation, I don't know, I was in pretty close contact with them and stuff, because I was getting some calls of no water and stuff, and I know what turned in from a short-time thing, which should have been a switch over, turned into a many-hour thing, but appreciate you guys, busting their tail up there, and, you know, they were running around trying to figure out what was going on and stuff, so...
Appreciate it, thank you.
They made the best out of a bad situation and stuff, but, one other issue, and I don't know if we have a way, I know when this happened, and I know it went from a short-term deal to a longer, bigger deal and stuff, but I was kind of concerned, one, I live up in that area, and there was no fire hydrants, you know, can we coordinate anything with fire department and stuff when that happens, that, I mean, I called Kenny right away, because I was concerned, and so were people up there, you know, you know, we've all known that time makes a big difference when there's a fire, and seconds count and stuff, but, that everybody can kind of be prepared and stuff when something like that comes up, you know, knowing they got to go to different hydrants, or call in more stuff, you know, equipment and stuff, but I'd hope we could do something a little different and stuff, I ended up calling the fire department just to say, hey, we're out of water up here, and it's an unknown, because I had talked to Cory, and he told me they were having trouble, big trouble.
Yeah, so, so the big trouble was, we couldn't shut the water off to the area where we needed to work, we could shut it off to the surrounding areas, which affected you and your neighbors, and Ridgeway, and some other areas up around the school, at any point, there could have been an issue up there, we could have went to any intersection, opened one valve, and everybody would have had water again, so...
Okay, yeah, and I'm talking out of not knowing and stuff like that, I just want to, you know, I just want to be sure we have coverage, you know, to be able to do
Yeah, if we were not on site, we wouldn't, for one, we wouldn't leave an area without water, but we were on site the entire time.
But there would be a reason to not coordinate with other departments, right, so I mean, we can make a phone call, maybe that'd be the process going forward?
Something and stuff, but like I said, I mean, I've seen the frustration on your guys' faces up there, they didn't hold back, but they made the best out of a tough situation and stuff, but they were running around all over looking for every possible avenue and stuff to figure out why it was still gushing out there.
Yep.
But thanks for their, what they were trying to do.
Appreciate it, I'll pass it along.
Yep.
Up there at Fifth and Jefferson, is that where you guys, a homeowner issue up there?
That's, that was a job completed by a local plumber and a local excavator.
When's that going to get finished?
We can contact them and ask them, they're responsible for the street repair, so...
I think they're still leaving.
A piece of pipe.
Yeah, I figure the next couple of weeks when the buses start rolling, so, okay, thanks.
Oh, I did have one other thing, Steve, that fire hydrant out by the nutrition center, did that ever get, I keep forgetting to go out and buy there.
We're waiting on parts on that one.
Okay.
That hydrant was built on a changeover year, the parts we ordered and waited six months to come in, was for the prior of, the first part of the changeover year, or is the newer style hydrant, so now we're waiting on those parts.
Yeah, I kept forgetting to ask, just because somebody keeps asking me about it and stuff, I, thanks.
A quick question for you, we are kicking around a text alert system, do you feel that that could be beneficial for when you are doing some water line replacements, or flushes, or anything like that, or, or any other public works project in a certain area to alert the residents of that, do you think that would be beneficial, in your opinion?
I mean, we've had it before.
Right.
And we did have access, and we did put stuff on there, I don't know if there was a overwhelming number of people participating on it, but...
Well, and the only reason I ask is because of, I mean, on Facebook, I know we've been pushing out that info via our Facebook page, but I'm wondering if we're missing a certain segment of the population that may not be checking that on a regular basis?
If we had it, we'll participate in it.
What, what's that?
If we have it, we'll participate.
Well, I figured you would, I just wanted to get your opinion on what you thought of that, if that was beneficial in your mind, just to let residents know if there was a project in their area that they could have some disruption of water, or traffic, or, you know what I'm saying?
I mean, I've had people with dish washers go in, close in the washer, you know, and stuff like that, I mean, it, like I said, that's why I went down and talked to them, and your guys told me everything they knew at the time, so there was no, but yeah, it was something a little quicker, and I don't know, if something like that, you have to, for that to go out to people, you have to sign up for it, or...
They would have to opt in, like the resident would have to opt in to the service, and then they would receive a, you know, a text notification whenever we sent it out regarding the project, and, but if it goes out to everybody, it wouldn't just go out to people in a certain ward, or in a certain area, correct?
You can, some of you can't do that type of geofencing.
Sure, okay.
So is that our topic in the work session, that we're going to?
Yes, correct, I was just getting some feedback from Steve, just considering that that, that would be a main topic, I think, of those texts, would be, would be public works projects in certain areas, so, just curious.
Anything else?
All right, thanks, Steve. Move to public comment.
Hello, Deana, Chrysler with the Chamber of Commerce, I'm just here to basically say thank you to the city for taking time out of your busy schedules to host us for our leadership sessions that we've had, we've had two of them so far, we have another one coming up, so we were here in May with Happy, and then in July, we were with the Firehouse, and then in October, we're going to be with the Streets and Parks Department doing a workday, I'm not real sure, I don't know what we're doing, but we're doing something, I think last year we did Valley Springs Park, and so we have 14 participants this year, and it's just been really, been a great, I guess, program, and I appreciate you guys taking the time out of the department's schedules to accommodate us, also, too, just to kind of throw it out there, if you've never been a part of the leadership program and you want to, we would definitely like for you to come and jump in on a session with us, we would totally put you to work, so, but again, it's just more of an appreciation, and a thank you for allowing your staff to accommodate us, so, any questions? I guess you can't.
Okay, thanks, Deana.
Hello, Suzy Johnson, 64 North Second, hopefully everybody got a chance to read the email I sent regarding the EV charging stations, I hadn't really planned on saying anything, but I wanted to just touch on a couple of things Happy mentioned, and I didn't know, I know you can't ask questions, but I only heard from a couple of you, so I, Bob brought up a couple of things, even though the Tesla technology is proprietary, Teslas can charge anywhere, just about, when you buy the car, you get an adapter, every Tesla owner I know, myself included, we own a Tesla, keep it in the car, so it goes everywhere with us, ChargePoint, which is what the city is looking at, is the largest charging network in the country, even though my car won't plug directly into it, I have that little adapter, that is the network I use the most when I'm not at a supercharger, the superchargers are the Tesla exclusive technology, they are actually opening up to other brands now, so other cars in the near future will be able to charge at those superchargers, but again, that is Tesla's technology, supercharger, everybody can use, and in my opinion, it's probably one of the best things to go with, they have their own app, you can search the app and see where you want to stop, because you know there's a, there's a ChargePoint there, it's all app-based, it will even tell you if it's in use or if it's available, and if they're both in use, you say, alert me when it's available, so you can go move your car two blocks or whatever to go charge, so I think in our situation, for the reasons I pointed out in my email, that the Level 2 charger, and specifically a ChargePoint, which I didn't know was, was the big consideration at this point, would, would be really ideal, so I would just encourage you to really consider that, as well as the location of Main Street Park, I think, as an EV owner that's got some experience with traveling and charging in different locations, I don't think anybody would have any issues with, with charging at that location, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Okay, we'll move to tonight's consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, I've got a motion and a second, any further discussion on these topics? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will move to new business, this will be a first reading of Bill Number 4575, this is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the city of St. Genevieve and the St. Genevieve Community Access Television Board, Channel 990, 991.
I had one question, is there any difference in the funding?
No, same funding as we've done with previous years.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, any other business up for discussion? Okay, with that, I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting. And call the work session to order, move, or, excuse me, we'll look to approval of tonight's work session agenda.
So, move.
Second.
Okay, first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, with that, we move to work session item number one, which is fire tags.
So I sent you a copy of Kenny's email to me about the fire tags, and the cost that the, that the surrounding departments have increased, Kenny can probably give you some more details on that, or you got any questions about, about trying to increase them, we have not done that for, I'm not sure how many years, you know, Ken?
Well, the last time we got a raise was 2005, it's documented in there.
Yeah, it's in, 17 years.
And Kenny, what are the numbers that we are getting now, and what this will take us to in overall funding?
Right now, we're averaging about $27,000 a year intake on the fire tags, from the ones we sell, in our budget meeting, Happy had projected that potentially we'd pull about $48,000, so we'd step up from 27...
27, no, sorry.
We're at like 27,000, give or take a little now, and Happy projected 48, whenever we increase, if we increase to what our recommendation is.
If you, compared to that other fire department you might use as a model?
Yeah, Bloomdale's probably as close as we're going to have to us, as far as capabilities and everything, and the ones that haven't raised theirs, and keep in mind that this was done several months ago, but the ones that hadn't raised theirs yet are all going to probably do it in the near future, and they're all shooting for around $100 for regular residential's, I think Waingarde is 90, and everybody else is real close to that.
Kenny, I think I had questioned you, and you told me to ask Sue, and I didn't do that, what percentage of people in that area actually participate in the fire tags?
That would be more of a Sue question, she sends them out, and she's one that collects.
I mean, I feel like we're at 90 percent.
90 percent.
There's not that many people that doesn't purchase them.
We actually, if we're at 90 percent, we're actually one of the better progressing, a lot of them in the county are getting 50, 60, maybe 70 percent of it, buying into it.
What do we need to move forward on this, then?
Yeah, what we do is bring a...
Resolution?
An ordinance.
I think that's something we need to look at.
Yeah. Can you come forward with the increases? Okay, all right.
Thanks, Chief. Okay, work session item number two is the discussion regarding the no parking area on Jefferson Street.
So I emailed out a couple of maps, one, the Google map, I couldn't bring up the night of the meeting, which is helpful in that it's got cars parked there, and then I brought the GIS and marked off where there is no parking listed on that street, and also highlighted where they've got the new playground going, and I don't think that's the scale, but they have a new playground that's going in on the parking lot. So the question was, if we were going to go west of that lower entrance, I'm sorry, if we're going to go west of the, of the upper entrance, away from Third Street on Jefferson, to that lower parking lot, how many spaces did you want to, you want to mark off, so you've got 55 feet before you get to the next entrance, so I'm guessing, usually you're getting two vehicles in there.
I mean, that's what's parked in this picture.
So, what you see now.
There are two vehicles. Like a red vehicle.
Yeah, we had a red and a black. You have no parking through that, through the entrance exit, and then that goes down until you see that one vehicle, there's actually probably enough space for, you might go get two vehicles in there, pretty tightly, and then another 15 feet of no parking to the intersection with Third Street, and then you see two vehicles parked across the street, and that's about the only space that you can park on the north side of Jefferson.
I mean, we have, we only have two options, we can, well, three, we can do no parking the whole, that whole distance, or get rid of, well, two... We can do no parking the whole, that whole distance, or get rid of, well, two options. Either no parking for all or just one car. We can take away one car or both cars.
Right.
Basically.
Right. Yeah, we divide it in.
Right, I mean, that's really the only two options. We can take away one car or both cars.
Or not do anything.
Or not do anything.
The request was that we do something.
Well, I think that, I think the request was for both cars, and then no parking the whole, basically, we'd get rid of both cars?
That wasn't specifically the request that I received. It was just to eliminate the obstruction for somebody pulling out of that parking lot. I mean, maybe it's more of an enforcement issue than it is a new ordinance issue as far as the people that are parking there. If there's somebody parking in the no parking now, I, I think one spot would be reasonable. I mean, it's not going to, I wouldn't think that would be a huge detriment to value within one parking spot on the road.
That's something we can always change.
Right.
I agree. I think one.
One spot's probably.
The one closest to the, to the parked.
So, just extending that no parking where it currently is, just one more space. Is that what you're thinking?
Where that 60 foot is, it would go to 75 foot or whatever it'd end up being.
In your opinion, is, do you think that alleviates the safety concern?
I would like to hear from the actual complainant, but he didn't, he didn't demand no parking on the block. I think he was just trying to be reasonable, trying to just open up the.
Yeah, it was a site distance.
Site, site distance from that spot, yeah. So, I mean, I would say if one spot doesn't do it, then we need to come back and revisit the second part to do that.
Okay.
Bring back an ordinance.
Work session item number three is the cost for the text alert system that we kind of briefly discussed at, at last meeting.
So, the TextCaster system costs us $4,000 a year. That's probably gone up like everything. That was the last year that we had it. Had a chance to talk to Code Red this week. Their price is about 4,600. It goes down if you buy like a five-year package.
What was our actual cost, though? Because I know we would get a text alert, and it would say, "Well, I know Bloomsdale Bank did it. I know, I believe Country Mart did it." I think, I don't remember who all was in it, but it would say that first, TextCaster, Bloomsdale Bank, the city, you know, or whatever. It would have a sponsor for that particular month, and I don't know how much money that raised and offset the cost.
Or we had $1,000 a year. We, you know, so it's.
Is that something that we can do on the new system, too, to defray the cost?
You can. You just make it a, like a signature at the bottom of the page.
Yeah, this was right at the beginning, I believe, if I remember correctly.
I'd rather have it at the bottom so they don't gloss over it if they see, you know, text alert from.
But I would think we would be interested in that.
I think you may lose people after that. Just, just in general, just reading it, I'd rather focus on the item at hand and then if there's, you know, a signature or something at the bottom.
And I have a meeting tomorrow morning with Everbridge. I'll see what they offer. So, that just gives you an idea that the costs are going to be roughly about the same for our site city and for the potential amount of people that would sign up for it.
So, who actually puts the information in there that?
Well, like Steve would put it in for Public Works.
We do, yeah. The only one that is automated is weather alerts. So, that comes from the National Weather Service. And if there, if you sign up for like a lost child, kidnapped child, stuff, Amber Alerts and things like that, then, you know, then it's generated by somebody else. But road closure, water main break, street closure, you know, stuff like that's going to have to be done by staff.
So, we can opt out of those other things, though, right? If we didn't want to send Amber Alerts.
Well, this is where you would have the.
Oh, you can, you could.
You're opting out.
Opting out.
Or not opting into.
Opting into that.
Yeah.
Because I think, I mean, if there is one, I think most people get out on their phone immediately anyway, so. For spam people, I guess.
Do we have any, or do you have a contact for citizens? Because their system that they use is pretty effective.
No, I may, I have somebody I can talk to or something.
I mean, if they could share that information or something, but I know their system works really, really well when there's an outage. Well, so does Charter's actually, or Spectrum.
And, and I would say for electric companies, they probably have somebody specialized in that, but that's, yeah, I'll check with them.
Happy, when you were discussing with Code Red, because I, I think you had previously said that TextCaster, that it was kind of, it wasn't very user-friendly when you were trying to input information to be sent out. Did they give you any kind of idea on what their interface looks like or anything when you're creating that? Is it going to be more user-friendly for you, do you think?
Not yet, because what I asked them was, what's the bottom line price? I wanted to bring prices back, so I contacted these two.
Sure.
To see if you were still interested, and we include that in the budget.
Okay.
And, and in some respects, I thought this was going to be maybe incorporated with the, with the website that we want to do next year, but I'm, I'm getting the feeling that they're, they are a separate application, so you're not going to get that with, you're not going to get that with all the companies. Some companies would have that as an option. That's part of the website.
Fully integrated, kind of sweet.
Right. But no, I don't know how user-friendly they are.
So, Happy, this is something that's pretty strictly restricted, who can get on there and who can put information on it.
Yeah, I mean, you're, it's the same as any other computer program. You're saying who can, who has authority, and who has authority over what, what, what can go out, what, what choices there are in the options. You know, like Steve can send out stuff for Public Works, but wouldn't be able to send something out for emergency management. You kind of, you know, you, you create these, these groups, and you'd be able to sign in. What I want to make sure is that it's accessible by phone and easy to, to put something together if you're out on a, on a job site and you have a problem occur, that they can do that easily, because TextCaster just didn't seem to have that kind of, that kind of ease.
Yeah, let's get some better pricing and.
Sounds good. Thanks for digging at information.
So far, so good.
Kenny, we don't want to authorize like that not to exceed prices. It's under so much prices, bring the ordinance back to us.
So.
For TextCaster?
Or?
For some type of TextCaster.
So, in my opinion, at this point, I'm going to include it with the new budget. So, that would be one of those items that we'll discuss whenever we're talking with full budget.
Okay.
And I think you're, will have kind of an idea of what it's going to cost when I get the third company, if it ends up being in the $4,000, $4,500 range. I think we can budget for that.
So, is that something that coincides with our budget year or?
Yeah, yeah.
We made this earmark it. I just want to make sure we, we get a system that's user-friendly for anybody that's inputting it, like you said. So, I think we consider that, too, whenever we're looking at bids, making sure that we get the input, that you can see how that integrates with what you're already doing, and if it's easy enough to send out those alerts, you know, if, if they were on a job site, like you said, just almost be able to send something out immediately as opposed to get into it. Because the old one was on a computer, right? The only way to get.
It was probably accessible by phone, but it just.
It just wasn't easy.
It just didn't seem, it didn't, from the desktop view, it just didn't seem easy.
Sure.
And Steve says he used it, so I mean, he was able to access it. And I think at the point that we say, "Yeah, we're going to do this," I'll talk to these different companies, and we would go out and probably run an RFP. I would bring staff in to look at it as well.
Yeah.
And they can tell us how easy it is, and then we can look at each other and go, "Ha ha, no." And then make that decision based on what we feel we can, we can access or not access.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion on that? Okay. Move to work session item number four, and that is the conclusions from the CBIZ salary study, and then move to some recommendations as well.
So, I tried to include and narrow down the information that CBIZ included, trying to give you some, not trying to overload you with the information that they have in their spreadsheets. But we went through the numbers at the, a couple of meetings ago. When did we start that? Back in May. Talked about it and brought it back. Board wanted step increases put in for office staff as well as the police department, so that's now been included in here. And the questions are, what do we want to do moving forward? So, you have the numbers in front of you. There are adjustments that would be made for the, either the step increases or based on competing salaries. So, you've got a number of different recommendations from, from CBIZ. So, I believe that's a recommendation page. So, you have the summary of the findings. On your summary of the findings is the number breakdown that you would have to look at including. And we're coming up on budget, and we can include this as, as part of the budget for fiscal year 2024. Just running through this, you know, just kind of summarizing. They looked at what the 50th percentile was. Average base pay is approximately 6.8% below the published survey data. The same time that we were doing a salary survey, Crystal City was doing a salary survey, so we're trading information back and forth. So, this gave us some extra information to, to include with this. So, the second bullet point, as presented in Exhibit 6A, the initial cost to implement the new staff structure would be about $11,809. So, that's what the step increases that, that we would incorporate. The initial cost to implement the police structure would be $4,041. This is the cost to bring all employees to the minimum of their respective proposed ranges or their step rate, and that totals 15,850. So, they give you a percentage of what overall payroll is, 1.9%. Talks about all the employees. Third bullet point, in, in Exhibit 6B, the initial cost to implement the new step structures would be about $38,950. And this brings the employees to their new step rate and represents 4.8% of payroll. And then it's presented in Exhibit 7A, the initial cost to implement the compression adjustments. And compression is the comparisons with other communities and other businesses with like-type work. It would be about $18,121. So, that's 2.2% of payroll.
So, Happy, if we, whatever position we take on this, do we talk about this and the possible increase, however we come with an increase across the board percentage? So, it could be a twofold.
Yeah. Yeah, you can do this. You can also add, you know, either a flat fee or you can do a percentage. We have figured in an amount on the, in the budget at this point, a sizable amount, just to kind of cover ourselves for, for a few weeks, until we narrow down what we want to do. Because I have, because there is an increase in my salary with this, I will not make a recommendation. If you want to pull out my increase in this, my recommendation is to accept it. So, that seems rather confusing, and I think it's, it isn't the right thing to, to do. So, I can't really give you a strong recommendation. It has to be the board that says, "Yeah, we see where we have some deficiencies, and we can make some changes." When we first looked into this, that was a question, too. Will you accept it if it, if it comes through? And the board thought, "Yeah, let's see. We're not going to commit ourselves 100%, but we feel it's important for, to, for our employees and to retain our employees."
I mean, I understand your position here, and it has been brought to my attention about recommendations, you know, and how they affect. But I mean, so is this all or nothing, or can we separate out?
I think one of their recommendations was to make it uniform.
I think if you, if you cut something out, what are you cutting? And then what are we, why are we doing that? Is it, is it because of the, because of the position, because of the pay? Is it the individual? I mean, you have to be careful when you, when you have it across the board, kind of, here's what we want, where, here's where we think you need to go because of these numbers. And it's done without any, any individual input. So, I mean, so, let's say on what, and I'll take, again, I don't have to be included in this, but just to look at the way they judge for my pay increases, which is, you know, like 800 bucks. City administrators are generally looked at by the amount of experience, not the amount of years they spend with the city. But that's what we based this on, was the amount of years with the city. That was the objective figure that you could put in there, besides all the information coming in about the other businesses and what their pay was for like-type of work. So, if you start cutting something out, what are you cutting it out for? Because it actually relates, everything, everything kind of relates to the other, as the increases that need to be done. Because we need to, we need, we want the pay structure, the step structure, all right? So, you have to adjust for that. We have the years of service and what is compared to other, the other businesses, other like businesses, other cities. That needs to be increased. And then you look at the, what was the other part? Yeah, the step structures, and then the, just the cost to implement in the second bullet point because of the way, again, what our salaries are compared to others. So, there's two different sections that we look at on that.
Well, I wasn't necessarily talking about cutting anything, you know, as, as basically bringing, you know, some up maybe more than others and stuff, or, I mean, have we given up on the performance-based increases?
So, that would, that would end up being the, what you talked about, if you're going to, if you want to include something else. So, we're looking at right now about 3% inflation for this year. Initially thought it was 8.7% this year. That was last year. My goodness, this year is not as much. Yeah, if you say, "Let's do a 3% increase," that would also be performance-based. Again, it'll all be performance-based. I mean, we always divide it in half because we figure everybody deserves something for, you know, sticking with the city, and then we do the performance reviews, and then give them whatever the, the amount is based on their performance.
You know, I know there's arguments both ways, percentage-wise or flat. I think everybody knows I've always been, you know, especially with the inflation that we've seen, it affects everybody the same way, and I've always been more for the same rather than percentages. I know there's arguments both ways on it and stuff, but I, you know, we paid for a salary survey. I don't want to shelf the thing, even though initially I wasn't totally in favor of it until I finally got to the finer details of what all it brought into the picture. So, I think it's something we, we definitely need to work towards. I'm not sure about the dual increase, though. That, I'm having a little problem with and stuff, but.
The adoption of this and the inflation that, or the annual.
Well, a, a step increase or however we bring, you know, the salaries up to, and an increase all at the same time, I'm not sure.
Because we, in the new budget.
I'm not saying I'm opposed to it. I just need to.
In the new budget, we would also be looking at a cost of living adjustment or an inflationary annual adjustment.
If you want to, yeah, if you want to. You don't have, I mean, you, you have decisions. If you want to just do this, you want to do this plus a COLA. If you want to do this and a partial COLA, if you want to do this and a, and a flat rate.
Did, did you use CBIZ data in, in the adoption of a tiered step positioning to, to do your first draft?
No, first draft's about 9% increase in all salaries, just so I could have a, a baseline number to start with that I think will cover what we have in here.
How, how hard would it be to incorporate CBIZ recommendation to another draft, second draft?
Well, that's what I intend to do, but I want to get a decision from this board as to whether, whether they want to do that or not. I don't, I don't, and I don't know if, if putting it in and then taking it out is the best idea, the best method. I think if you, if we put it in, let's put it in, and then you can decide if you want to do a COLA increase.
The, the reason I asked the question in that way is because in my mind, the CBIZ study was a tool for you. That's a tool for you and other managers to be competitive in the marketplace where we had concerns with certain departments that were, we were, we were in danger of having a revolving door and losing some people. We become competitive with the CBIZ recommendation, but the most important thing is, can you make it work with your budget? I mean, I just, I don't see that we're going to sacrifice a lot of other things to make this work, and it brings us up to where we need to be to compete in the marketplace.
I'm going to give you my business approach to that and stuff.
Sure.
It's still hard to, it's still hard to spend money unless you know what money you have to spend. That's why I like to know where we are financially and stuff and. That's why I like to know where we are financially and stuff and, as, you know, even people in your own personal lives, you got to know what you got before you spend it. And that's why I'm a little cautious here of saying, you know, my opinion, just my opinion, to fully go along with it. I think we need to take steps definitely towards that, but I just need to see the whole picture.
Do I hear a compromise then?
Well, it could be a compromise.
A couple of years, maybe, maybe we don't get there in '24, but maybe we get halfway there in '24.
Well, I think we look and see, like you said, where we're at on money, if we can swing this.
Sure.
I mean, I think...
I don't want to write a check that bounces you.
No, I agree. I agree. But I think that, that we're going to continue to see even over the next few years, we're consistently going to be competing with all of these other agencies because everybody is leapfrogging over what the previous agency is doing. And, I mean, all city governments are kind of in the same boat. By next year, Jefferson County is going to be topping out the road guys at $80,000. You know, like, we can't compete with that, even, even raising this to $50,000 for law enforcement. I'm not proposing that we go $80,000. I would love to see that. But at the same time, I would be opposed to stepping this in. If we're going to do it and we have the money to do it, we should do it. I don't think we're ever going to, I, I will never regret giving our employees a raise that makes them more comfortable and relieves their stress because they're just going to get better performance at work, so.
And all the while, we don't know that tonight. We can't, we can't make that call tonight.
Exactly.
Fair. That's fair.
But you know, here's proof, even in the numbers and stuff, we were, you know, we were sold on this 8.7%, and now that's all went by the wayside. It's moderated out, you know, you know, we're...
Well, that was last year. That was last year's call.
Yes.
So this year it's down. So, but that, you take those 12 months, the previous 12 months it was 8%, we gave a dollar. So this year now we're looking at 3%. And if you look at the percentage amounts, it talks about the percentage amounts in here, as to what a salary that is, and that's a total of 9%. So that's why I've got, what I've got figured in there. Yeah.
So what is our timeline that we need to have this finalized by the budget year?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be for the budget year. So what I, what I'll do is, we'll include this without a, do you want a COLA raise included as well, or do you want...
I would want a COLA raise included, but that's one vote.
I'd like to see the breakdown of it, yeah. See what it's going to cost for, for both, adopting this step increase and what a COLA or a split COLA would cost. Because it's going to come down what our budget looks like. I'm just kind of the same way with...
But that, that's what I'll come back to you with, is we'll have those numbers. Right now, we're at 41%, so we're under where we need to be. So I know this. But we, we talked earlier today about our, our budget for the, for putting in video and stuff in here. We've already looked at cutting that, that project and, that portion of the project in half. So that's going to add in to what we have here already. I think we've got some other things that we can pull out. So I can, I'll try to get it back up to 50%. But if you want to look at, what did we do last year? We did, last year we did either the dollar or the 8%. We went back to the dollar.
Well, it was, it was a dollar because it ended up being 2% for the majority of, at least the police staff.
If you're, if you're over, yeah, like 40,000 to 4,000.
It benefited the part-time employees who had, after, after 9%.
So, so what we'll do is, we'll include this as, as presented here by CBIZ. We'll do one of those, then we'll do that as well as an increase with like a 3%. Do you want to go? And that's the other thing, I do need to know. Do you want a 3%, which would be usually one and a half merit, or, yeah, one-half merit, one and a half COLA? I split it in half.
A 3%.
Yeah, 3%, a 3, no, a 3% COLA increase, but half of it ends up being underperformance. So it's a merit increase.
That's still over and above what other increase we talked about besides the salary study?
That would be in addition to the salary study.
But remember, we're, the initial adjustments are just getting us to a point where we're at, on par with our other municipalities and other similar jobs that they've served at. So one is a, is a market correction, and then the other one would just be a cost of living adjustment.
I don't know, have we ever did cost of living or we just did a simple increase? As long as I've been here, it was just...
No, we've done cost of living.
Okay. Plus an increase.
It's kind of spirit indicating.
I think we've split it up to a 3%, so percent and a half, COLA, percent and a half.
Well, I mean, we, as a board, we approved cost of living before. Now how it was divvied up was up to whoever was city administrator.
We, you know, we usually talk about that in the meetings and we'll put it on the overall budget as well. It's included.
Ashley?
You probably, I think you might have touched on it a little earlier, but I didn't catch it when Bob asked. But if you were to take the CBIZ overall increase recommendation in Figure 7A, that's all based on current, like, recent information. So I'm having trouble understanding why you do this plus a cost of living. If you were bringing everybody up to step for this year, and then if you look at the step increase table, it doesn't have a figure on it to reference, but the green one, that's over 17 years and based on hire, right? So seven would be your seventh year of hire, and that's where you should be. These are all bigger adjustments. So that should help take out the question of percentage raises, as long as you believe that your range for your minimum and your maximum is market value for that position, or valuable for that position. This is why I pushed for it whenever I was in Alderman, is because every year when it came time for budget, we'd have these conversations and we didn't like the answers, right? Oh, what's a good raise for this year? Well, this is cost of living, and then we didn't like that. Or, well, we think this position's overpayable, we think this position's underpaid. You have the data here if you're willing to read it.
Well, we, but we, but we don't necessarily, because these were just base salaries and they didn't include benefits. So I feel like we got kind of shortchanged with the, the study that we had. So I agree with you, it does get you to on par, but it doesn't give you the full scope of what their total salary package, package is.
But that, that was highly debated at a previous meeting and stuff, whenever we were, had the guy zooming in here and stuff, and I was, I was wrong in it because I thought we were getting the whole thing. I still contend that the whole package is important to certain age groups, to certain younger age groups it isn't and stuff, and I don't know how to balance that out and stuff, but...
We're still comparing apples to apples, too. I mean, that's the...
We are comparing apples to apples and stuff, right.
Go ahead, Ashley.
I would push back on that, in that only you as a board can quantify the value of a benefit. Because you might offer this vacation package and it comes out to this number, but this company over here that you're trying to compare benefits package to, they might have other leniencies in their company, so their vacation might not be on par with what you're offering. And so, like, the numbers aren't going to line up because you don't know what else makes that person want to work at that job. The number that you can compare is a salary. Everything else, health insurance to some degree, but me as a 30-something single person, thank God relatively healthy, you know, I have my health, I don't have to think as hard about my health insurance as another person. So sitting here trying to quantify that against another business, that's for the employee to decide on their benefit of how lucrative that is for them. What you can compare is the salary.
I, I just disagree. I think the benefit package is really important to a lot of the employees, and we have a really good benefit package.
The current employees. But how do you make this working for City Hall something that people want to do long-term? In the next several years, you could potentially have several retirees, and how are you going to get people that want to work here and aren't constantly revolving that position? Because we see it in some of our, our positions that have come open in the recent years. So just something to think about, but this was supposed to help take out a lot of that thinking and arguing, and it sounds like it's being made way more complicated by looking at the benefits package. When we offer a decent benefit, as a city, the city offers a decent benefits package, but this company might be better and that company might be worse. You don't know, and you, only you as a board can quantify what the value of benefit is.
In addition, now we have an idea where we sit, where, where does an employee sit with respect to compa ratio? So, I mean, you, you probably before didn't consider that, and we had employees that were considered to be topped out, and so you had to make a decision like, how do I compensate them at the end of the year in, in the form of a performance-based raise? Everybody should probably get a COLA, but what, we, we never had consistent discussions about that. You know, now you know, it's like, hey, employee A sits within 50%, and so they've got room to grow into their, their top end of the compa ratio and salary. We didn't know that before. It's easier to make decisions.
I think the city offered a 18-cent benefits package a few years ago, but was taken away last year, so I don't think it's fair to say that we still offer a good benefits package. And secondly, I think it's hard, in, in our line of work, we don't work in a factory, we're not making soda bottles. It's hard to, to judge somebody's merit. Like, you either follow policy or you don't follow policy. If you're not following policy, then there's disciplinary action. But how do you benefit somebody, or how do you, how do you, how do you reward somebody for following policy better than they're supposed to? Like, you either do or you don't. So I, I've never liked the merit-based system for our line of work. Like I said, if we worked for Pepsi and you're supposed to make 100 bottles an hour and you make 200 bottles an hour, then we can qualify that or quantify that. If you make 75 bottles an hour, then, then you can measure that against their, their merit. But for us, we have policy in place. You either follow that policy, you drive safely, you don't get complaints or whatever the case may be, or you don't. And if you don't, then we're, we're handling that through disciplinary measure.
But Eric, it can't be that simple, where you would take steps to, to remove an employee if they, if they didn't conform. It can't be that black and white. There has to be a measure in the middle where you're worried about retention, you're worried about recruitment, where you're bringing somebody in, maybe you bring somebody in who, eh, they violate a couple of policies, and what they're, they're teachable, and you counsel and you bring them up to speed.
Right. I'm not saying fire everybody that violates policy, but I'm saying if you're basing somebody's raise on, on merit, and you don't have a good system for, for measuring that merit, then it seems counterproductive to, to, to base their pay on that.
I don't know, I think we have somewhat, I mean, we go to the supervisors and that is a, that's a lot of their weighing in of what they get, but, you know, I'm going to agree with Chil and Ashley, and that's going to sound confusing and stuff, but, you know, and I stated this in an earlier meeting, and I do get to interview people personally myself, you interview a younger person, all they want to know is what's the rate of pay. They could care less, but if you're talking about somebody more up in age, you know, 40 years old, somewhere, you know, a different age group than somebody 20 years old, the first thing they ask is, what is the package? That package is important. It's important to them and it's important to the city because it is a big cost. And how do you not weigh in costs? So that's how I'm going to agree with both of you.
And I agree. I agree with that. That's not...
Yeah, I mean, it's a big deal and stuff. I mean, insurance is expensive, as we've all seen. You know, you tally up paid sick time, vacation time, the whole nine yards. I mean, the biggest thing I look at is, you know, and Ashley, you said it and stuff, we've got people retiring. Why have they stuck here? They stuck here because it's a decent place to work with a decent package. Are they would have left, I would say? I don't think we have a revolving door. We've lost very few, and that's because of something.
I think that's because we've made steps to, to secure that and, and maintain, you know, both leadership staffs with the leadership abilities and the equipment that we provide and the package that we, that we offer. I think it's all in a perfect way.
We still have, we still have to live within our means. We have to be competitive with other, you know, like organizations of ours, whether it's private or municipal or whatever, but I don't see where we can afford to do things that nobody else does or is very, very, very limited in this day and age.
But a lot of stuff's coming back, too.
What's that?
A lot of benefits that were taken away the last few years are starting to be reintroduced again because they can't buy the employees' insurance.
Be more specific. I'd have to say proven.
So I mean, in the last insurance meeting, the insurance guy told us that he's seen more and more agencies also offering the full insurance again. Whereas two years ago, we were a rarity.
And it's starting to be reintroduced again because that's the only way they're able to draw anybody, to set them apart.
And I, and I think that there's a middle ground here somewhere, and I don't think that this is the time to fight for, for those. But, I mean, it is noted, I think, I think that, like Joe, I think that, Bob, I think that those benefits do have to come into play as far as the overall package. And if you're going to compare apples to apples, it should, it should include that benefit, and I think that's the, the bottom line.
So I'm going to have to go out and advertise either for a tourism director or we're going to have to go for an agency. But if I go out for a tourism director, I now at least have a bottom-line salary that I can set out there for people to see and, and see if they're interested or not. And so one thing about this salary study that is going to be beneficial to the city is we now know that number. So that's important. So what I'm going to do is include the, include all of the increases as recommended. That'll be one budget, and then we'll come back with 3% on top as a second budget to look at, that I pass out in August. And this means Sue's going to get all these goofy numbers from me, and she's going to hate me tomorrow, but that's okay. We'll make it work.
And Happy, that's what sold me on the salary survey and stuff, was having that ability to go out and advertise because we seem to have one position that is somewhat revolving door.
Yeah. So, and that'll be a discussion at the next meeting, so we'll, we'll get into that.
And part of the argument is that, you know, all the, the salary study is based off numbers right now. Everybody's going through their budgets right now, and once all those budgets are approved, that salary study is no longer valid anyways, because everybody else is in their new budget years for the most part. They've already increased their salaries. So we need to get ourselves on the right page now, because even with the COLA, I mean, if we don't keep up with that, then we're going to be right back next year in the same boat that we're not competitive anymore because we didn't take the step and the COLA, where the other ones that we're fighting against, they introduced even more on top of it by putting a COLA on top of what they're already paying more than we are. So we have to, we have to look at it and, and write down and, and try to get both of them in there, or else we're going to be behind again next year by not doing both this year.
But we'll look at that when we get the numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's keep that in mind. Bye, Gary Joe.
Okay. All right. Thanks for, I know this wasn't easy, but thank you for talking it out, so you know what to include.
Do they also have anything on that they want? Okay. Move to work session, item number five, and that would be a single supplier trash option for the city.
So we went through this before I got here, in 2001 and 2011, and then we went through it again in 2020, and request to look again at contracted trash hauling for the city. I've included some recommendations in here. It's a two-year type of process to do this, because you have to notify the existing trash haulers that you're going to look for a contractor and they're going to then pick up trash. I would highly recommend, as, as all the cities I've experienced and the ones I know of, they always go residential up to, up to for family, and that's it. You don't want to get into commercial because it becomes very convoluted. So you're still going to have some of that truck, truck traffic, but the idea is that you can cut down on the truck traffic, that you can, you know, have a run put in there. You can do recycling, home recycling, which I think only one of the current contractors does, does recycling. Boat pickup, yard waste, boat pickup days where you can have like a, come out to the park and toss in your mattresses or whatever. The disadvantages, it's all, everybody has to be a part of it. You can't say no. You have to, because you have to base that number on what's going to go to the contractor. They have to know what they're going to anticipate receiving. Now, it's a pass-through, so you collect and then you give it to the hauler. So if you don't get paid, like we don't get paid for water sewer, if they don't get paid... So if you don't get paid, like we don't get paid for water sewer, if they don't get paid for the trash, they don't receive that. So that has to be part of what is being understood upfront. Most of the time they're okay with it because you tell them how many people aren't paying their water bills, a percentage, and then they, they kinda know what to figure in. But they're also looking at, if you're gonna have just one trash hauler, they have to figure on equipment and personnel and make sure they got enough people. Again, a duplex, maybe fourplex, single family homes, that Sue's included, individual homeowners don't have a choice, again, they have to be part of it. So we did a survey, which I included, which is a little contradictory.
I was gonna say.
But that was their, you know, their overall opinion and when we talked about this, I think we had six questions or five questions on there. So there's a lot of positives except for question number two. Should we restrict your choice of who hauls your trash? And it was overwhelmingly no. And then you have the comments that we included as well to go through. But by seeing that, it was like, well, you can't have both. And that one overwhelmed the board at that time to say, it's just not, you know, you, you're gonna have a lot of negative reaction to that, is are we gonna get enough positives out of it for that, going forward with a single hauler for the city?
You, you also have to look at the number of respondents that's low.
Right.
So in all cases, you're gonna have under 50 people make the call for the greater population, which is not a good sample for me, but it's what we have.
I'm sorry, who was the one you said was capable of recycling?
I think it's Republic.
They do now, they do.
They do now, but they just posted a note, I was out there today, as of August 1st or September 1st, they were no longer doing recycling.
Oh, there you go, okay.
I think the prices have went down so much that they can't make any money at it, so.
Yeah, well, they have to, they pick it up in their trash trucks, they take it out in the same facility, then it has to go to a sorting facility and.
How would we make the call if this goes forward and we hire a company or we don't? How, what's that process?
You know, the thing that scares me the most about that, Mike, is the consolidation that's happened in this, you know, we've now got two more new companies and it seems like they're here for a while and somebody buys them out, one of the victims comes in and, I mean, I like the new smaller guys because of the smaller trucks and the less weight, where the big national guys got the big tandems with the tag axles and they can put.
Don't, I don't disagree, Bob, but I mean, procedurally, how do we adopt hiring or we decide not to, what's?
The next thing would have to be, if you're thinking of moving forward, we'd have to look at an RFP to, to hire a trash hauler and look at your specifics.
Execute an RFP, get that ball rolling, even if, even if we decide not to do it, that's, that's prudent.
You would probably most likely want to decide to do it so that we can then notify the trash companies. If you go out, I don't know how you bid if you don't commit to it.
So I'm only recommending that I see problems on the horizon with the number of respondents here for us to make that decision and then lock the people that didn't respond to the survey down, when we may need to have further public discussions to make a good solid decision on behalf of everybody.
So how many people do we have on like water and sewer?
Almost 2,000, but that includes commercial too.
So we're talking 2,000 compared to 50?
Well, it sounds like voter turnout though, so I mean, there you go. I mean, it's, it's about the equivalent to what voter turnout is.
But currently, we do have an ordinance that requires every residential address to have trash service, don't we?
Right, yes.
And how often is that checked or enforced? What mechanism do we have in place to ensure that?
We don't.
Okay, so the last time we talked about this, I was fairly vocal about it. When I worked in St. Louis doing property management, the properties that I had in like Clayton and some of the areas that had contracted trash, we had humongous problems with them. They didn't pick up, they didn't do this, they didn't do that. And the rates did not stay competitive. You had your smaller companies come in and surrounding areas charging significantly less to the residents there, but yet because of where they lived, they had to contract with the city to do that. I'm against any more government interference and it should be up to the private individual to hire who they want. And we talked about the last time of the issue of the big trucks and that was when one of our current companies that we have now, which I'm not gonna mention names, was using a much, much smaller truck and they were supposed to get a hold of the bigger companies and restrict, I mean, those bigger companies have the smaller trucks because some of the properties in other cities restrict the size of their trucks on residential streets and we never followed through with that, not as a board, not as a, a city, you know, the city hall. We never followed through on, on trying to get the bigger trucks off the streets and we never followed through on enforcing our existing ordinance that requires people to have trash pickup. So I, I am 100% again, I mean, the company I was with, I switched to one of the smaller companies now, I'm paying one-third of what I was paying and I don't wanna lose that option or that choice. I'm sure, I'm sure the city's gonna get a deal, but it's probably still gonna be more than what I'm paying now and that should be my choice, not the city's.
So Happy, you talked about the duplexes and the fourplexes, is that another thing that's gonna come back to the landlords then that they have to collect from their tenants?
No, we would look at the water bill. It would be on the water bill.
Okay, so it's on the water bill and they don't pay the water bill, they pull a midnight, then it falls back to the landlord then to pay the trash bill also?
No, no, because that would be a passer to the trash company. It doesn't, that's not the, that's not the landlord's responsibility. Because I don't think my state statute, that's allowed.
Yeah, I mean, I'm gonna agree with Joe here and stuff, I think it's gonna take the competitiveness out, you know, the whole thing, it's gonna keep these smaller people from coming in and that's what's driving the prices down. They're coming in trying to get their feet established and business.
I mean, if we're trying to keep trucks off the streets, we can regulate the size of the trucks that these companies are using.
Sure.
It's, it's real simple. Other municipalities have done it, I've seen it personally of what they do and the two other companies we have now use the smaller trucks, so those trucks are still available.
But I don't understand how you guys don't think it's a competitive when we're putting it out to bid for all trash haulers to bid on this contract. So it would be.
Maybe the smaller companies aren't big enough to handle the entire city, so that's gonna raise my rate.
You know, because we have one big company that basically controls their cost from the transfer part, you know, they can control their costs and almost put them out of business if they wanted to.
Right, and that might force these smaller companies to have to buy the bigger trucks, which we're trying to get rid of. So I just, it, I don't think, I mean, I'm all for less government and this is an area that I don't think the government, us should be involved in, in making these people, making the personal choice for people.
I agree with that, except that it's our property that's being affected because it's our streets that they're carrying on. So like you said, if we can control, if we can control the, the size of the truck.
But we haven't.
I understand.
We talked about this a couple of times since I've been on the board and nothing has ever been followed through on.
The unfortunate problem that we have though tonight is that we have a survey and the survey says we should pursue that. Even though I think the survey's faulty because the number of responses is low, I personally would disagree with, with Alderman and Steiger, but I have to support him because we're representing people, we've got that in front of us. That's how we would do that, I mean, I can't.
So Happy, back to your previous experience again, and I haven't asked that in a while and stuff, you said that you had contracts citywide and?
I mean, it was always established when I got there, so Peeveley, Festus, Harrisonville, all had trash service, moving out for bid, I think in all three cities at one time.
So basically, I mean, that was a yearly contract or?
Uh, no, there's usually three to five years. So that, you know, they knew what equipment to buy, manpower that they needed and you'd run that length and then you would go out for bid again.
Yeah, I don't know, I think that our current structure we have here with the companies, I'm gonna agree with Alderman and Prince, I'm against this, this is not true. But that's only my opinion, I'm not trying to influence anybody, everybody can speak their own opinion.
I mean, if we look at our responses, if we wanna go with those, the biggest split on all the responses is the, one question is should we restrict your choice of a trash company? That has the biggest split between them and it's 41 no to 10 yes. So that, to me, wipes out all the other questions that were asked.
But it doesn't because they answered those questions in the affirmative that they.
But they're a lot closer in answers, so I mean.
You have some people that are interested, so we can, we can argue that, right? I mean, there are some people that are, that are interested in it. So we can't use that survey to say that it's a, it's a no, that we can't go out and, and have a, a service.
I, I want to, but I can't argue that. I mean, eliminating competition.
Can we go back to one of the opt-out question? Why do you feel like a resident cannot opt out?
Because then how do you determine your, the number of trash customers to go out for bid for? You have to have those solvent numbers for the trash company to know what they, it can anticipate as revenue.
And that's not solving.
Because you say, well, it could be 1,400, it could be 1,100. Now then, you know, they don't know what to estimate, so then you can't.
Do you aligns offer trash service?
Probably.
Gotta find a death track first.
So that's why, that's why I say you have to have a, you have to, you have to have, they have to opt in automatically, it has to be part of their, their bill.
Could, could we not put some kind of agenda item forward for public discussion in a later meeting and, and try to solicit more public opinion?
Well, I think your, the survey is a good way to get that public opinion. I mean, how many people are you gonna be able to talk to in the next couple of weeks, say? I mean, you gonna get 50, 50 responses from people? Eh, maybe. I mean, are you gonna get enough people to give you a, an answer on that? I mean, that's why we did the survey, we paid for Survey Monkey just so we could find out and find out, and get some responses from residents because the board kinda felt they were, you know, just weren't getting any feedback on that. And how many people have actually requested the board members to, to further this along? I mean, that's, that has, you know, if everybody's been contacted, then yeah, but if we've only had a couple that have been, then, you know, is there that much interest citywide? There is interest from some people, but not, not, not a majority. And I think what people would like is yeah, for the city to contract and then we'll decide if we want to sign up with you or not. And I don't think that's how you can do this, you can't, you can't do the trash service that way.
I just think we're gonna eliminate the couple of competitive companies, small companies that have came into being and I, I can't imagine they could go from day one to day two and handle all that business and.
The consumer's gonna get less value, for sure. Less quality, less value, but that's what people seem to want.
Why do you say that? Why, why would you think they're gonna get less quality and, and less value?
Because I've seen it at some of those municipalities where I've, they had to deal with.
Because you, you have seen that, that's great, but we've also seen it where it works for a lot of cities as well.
That's fair, I don't, I don't have a crystal ball, but I'm saying you're taking competition out of a marketplace where people should.
But we put things out for bid all the time.
It's competitive.
It is competitive. I mean, it's a three-year contract or whatever you set up, so you can't say that this isn't a competitive bid and that you're gonna reduce value. I can understand, the only argument that I think you guys are having is the concept that you're taking freedom of choice away from a citizen and that I would agree with, I would agree with, but I just don't agree with any of your other arguments for why this wouldn't work.
Well, what are we gonna regulate next? Gas stations and what type of gas we can buy?
Where do you buy, where do you, your city water and city sewer?
What type of soda?
What about your fire department? You wanna contract with different fire departments too? We're restricting you to pick the one fire department.
That's a city service and that's not.
That's what this is.
No, this is.
Not right now, it's not. Correct, yes.
Are we gonna regulate beer trucks? Are we gonna regulate Pepsi and choose only Coke in the city?
Joe, you feel like.
Maybe there's some advantages to that, let, present it, let's see.
You've heard from a number of people then in favor.
Well, and I've dealt with it.
Well, I mean, Joe Steiger, you've heard from a number of people. Okay.
I just think, you know, then what's next, we just gonna eliminate the bid process on water and sewer projects or are we gonna keep that competitiveness?
But that's what we're doing here, we're putting it out to bid. How do you think we're not putting it out to bid?
Because then we're gonna, so I think that one company is gonna do all our water and sewer projects, you know, we're taking that.
Because those are contracted with other individuals, it's the same as the trash, we're contracting with another individual to do this service for the city. So water and sewer is an enterprise fund and you contract out to get things done. It's the same as trash, you're contracting out to get things done as it, as it allows the state statute. So there was a reason that the state allowed that to happen, there was, there was a purpose behind it and enough, enough requests. So that's what you're doing, so you have to go out for bid and yeah, we'll still go out for bid for water sewer projects, street projects, I mean, it's, it's just that you're locking it down for three to five years and mandating, this is, we mandate who you get your water from, we mandate where your sewer goes.
Which again, we contract out who they get their water from now, so.
Right.
I mean, I, I don't see, I, I see what Bob is saying, you know, you have companies in town that are doing a good job that aren't causing the problem of the overloaded trucks and by putting this out to bid, you're potentially cutting them out of the bid process because they're not big enough and so they're, they're being punished for something that they're already doing right.
But if they, they win the contract.
Right.
They can man up and staff up and equipment up to, to drill their business exponentially.
Right.
And continue that same quality work that they're doing now.
Right.
It's a win-win.
This is a big enough area for them to make that investment and it's probably not without raising rates.
Well, they're already currently operating here now.
And if they're adding 2,000 residents or 3,000 residents.
I think that's kind of a business's dream, you know, I mean.
I mean, the bigger companies are gobbling them up anyway and that is a fact.
A request that I had, and I'm gonna want to move this to the table and I don't disagree with Joe Prince, you know, the over, overstepping of the government, I completely agree with that. The request that was made was, they've talked about this for three or four times, three or four go rounds now and they know that it's a two-year process, so can we at least get, getting the two-year process started? That was the request that was made to me, so I've relayed that to you now.
Is there a thought that with an exclusive contract, that on a per-rate basis, the consumer would have, would pay less as compared to an individual contract with their individual hauler? You see what I'm saying?
Hmm, there's the potential.
Right.
So you're, you're saying this is a.
Because we're, we're talking about adding value, so I mean, if you were on a rate basis, if it was gonna.
Okay, with that thought in mind and stuff, if we're doing a three to five-year contract, that's guaranteeing that the rates are gonna stay the same?
Well, they probably have a.
There's a structure.
A colon or, or a, you know, per year they can go up to, yeah.
So it's a number we don't know?
No, it's in the contract, it says maximum of 5% or whatever, you know, and it would be what we put out there.
Yeah, we would specify.
We would specify that they can go up to.
The only other consideration I throw out there, and like I said, I wanna argue you all night long, but I won't, but.
They're not gonna let you.
You're not gonna let me, but if, if we sign up to do that, then we're in the position of being a quality assurance evaluator in some respect, so that's your office and do you have those cycles, can you dedicate? Because I, I can't believe it's gonna be just as easy like, well, you had a problem with pickup on Wednesday, call the contracted carrier, they're probably gonna have a first stop to call you personally, but.
Oh yeah, they'll call the city first.
Yeah, and you'll have to call.
It's all the, you know, I agree with the limiting the size of the trucks, that's my biggest concern.
We've got a silent contract.
Yeah, no, I mean, whichever way we go on this, we need to limit the size of the trucks if it's something we should have been doing, shame on us.
I've seen some of the contracts that they require those trucks to have scales built into the, into the frames themselves, so that they know if the trucks are running overloaded per, per axle, you know, so you can get that extreme, that's costly, they don't wanna do that because that adds costs and they add that into the price that they're gonna offer.
I was gonna say, I think it's important to consider that if we do limit the size, you may see that pass down to the consumer through those avenues too. And they may cite that as a determining factor whenever they determine a consumer's rate. So it's just a thought. It may not, it may not come to pass like that, but it's, it's possible.
That's a big unknown, but.
And I think even if we start this two-year process tonight, which I'm exposing, I think we still look at limiting the size of the trucks in this, in this cycle, I mean, in this, you know, even. I mean, in this, you know, even in that two years, trying to eliminate the U V trucks from running up and down the streets three or four times, you know, because they'll run down, turn around, come back and hit the other side of the street. You know, maybe we could make an ordinance where you put your trash on one side of the street so they're not making two passes. I mean, there's, there's a few things that we can look at, but that was the concern that was brought to me.
I know driving down just one of major streets in my ward and stuff like that, the